Educating, Informing, Serving. FEC TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, everyone, I'm calling the meeting to order. Uh, at five, PM, Monday, 8:00 PM, at the panel call. I welcome anybody who's here to attend this session. Uh, I'll give a motion to adopt from the chairman, please.
Senator.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, before we start the meeting, I'd like to just say a few things so that we can, um, deal with this, uh, situation in the emergency meeting. Hopefully, in a great manner, if we can do it now. Um, to the board, I stand to have a notice of email over the weekend to postpone this meeting till the July 6th, because I felt that we were not ready to do this. And the reason is, is that I have completed an application, and those who hold an existing application are very similar, but on the application where they have to name the first coordinator and second coordinator, they're blank. I have no idea who the first coordinator is or who the second coordinator is. Also on the application, they also, it also lists the community groups and organizations that will participate in this study, such as the legislative body, county commission, zoning, or administrative health officer, sewage officer, and other government, non-governmental contributors, not go back. The second is the list, list individuals from the community with their affiliations who will actively work on this study, drawing the waste water committee. And then, on speed, there's another paragraph that says identify the individuals who will co-ordinate local activities and public outreach for community from the things that they're assigned. And again, they ask the two of the first coordinator who was the second. And, um, I also had a memo from, um, Mark Johnson, and it says here, "We that the legislative body needs to review the actual application for example, um, many of his applications in the past." But we, we haven't reviewed something quite. So I don't see how we can deal with this quite now. I just don't, I don't understand. The application blank. I don't know if it's not the state's responsibility to do all this. We have the legislative body, we can do it, but it was going to fill out. So to me, I don't know how we can achieve.
Mr. Chair, you've heard that we're starting to have a blank application.
That is heard.
So it's worth noting, in preparation for this meeting, Aaron did draft an application for us, and she sent that along as an attachment today, and I do have opposed filled-out application approving section three, and I made a comments comment for all of the select board members. So, and this is, this is only a proposal, and it, I think, will make me, that you describe of having something built into.
It's a bit of all fairness, and not on the rest of the board doesn't have this application anywhere.
Because I, because of the water commission plan to, excuse me.
Yeah, well, the procedure issued here to the town administrator, and he put us along with the board, so we had it in advance. That is the procedure, sorry.
So are you saying that it's not possible to use this draft, even though we have all the subject matter experts gathered here tonight to add to our question, and that the purpose of this meeting that's stated in the agenda is to discuss and act to approve the application?
I didn't say you couldn't approve it, I just said, I stand considerable time with Bill, um, going, but filling out our, our application, as we are supposed to do, but when you look at it, you can think of blank, because there was no doubt, you're going to the select board or to the town administrator. Now, what was suddenly out of focus, focus comes, comes something that somebody filled out that we're just seeing now at five o'clock. That's almost it.
Well, Bill, my major issue may be, well, it was our understanding that the purpose of tonight's meeting was to discuss and act on the application. And so, my question is, did the town administrator, or you get touching Matt about this? Because Matt would have been aware Aaron has prepared this draft for us, and I think we could adopt it, especially considering the due date that is important for us to meet on July 1st. If your adult legislature are going ahead and use this draft of the application as a model for what the select board might adopt. I hate for us to just end the meeting now and waste all of the time and energy and sweat that we have right now, um, to, and I'm happy to make a note that, that if you'd like to see the budgetary of this.
I worked four hours overtime on Saturday on this, because I had no direction from anyone on what to do. I was given a blank form by Matt Siano and told, "This is the application." That was the only thing, and I, and the, and the application actually came from Mark Johnson, and as you know, the application was completely wrong, had a different law that didn't even apply to this, that had to be corrected. When I got it back, it's still blank, I had no idea what's in it. You have to fill out certain things, and I, and, and without looking at this, I don't know what Aaron put down for what was going to be done, uh, or the reason it needed to be done.
Mr. Chair, it's not the administrator extended energy that you, you guys do me now, I feel this was a waste of time, I regret that too.
No, that isn't the point. The point is, we have an application in front of us, this should have been done, actually, as I said before, this should have been done months ago, not five days ago, and we wouldn't have any argument over the emergency meeting, Mr. Chair. But now, this is coming on us now. Are you going to go over word by word what it says here? Because I don't know that any of, any of the purposes or the reasons for it are, are the reasons that you guys want to adopt. You might want to adopt them. I, I put the reasons that were in actual fact, which are that we don't have a problem in the village whatsoever, except that there is a danger that in the future, we might have a, have a, a problem in the village, and that we, uh, would like to, there are, there is a business in town which would like to expand, and might be others who would like to come into the village if we could expand the sewer system. That is the reason for this. If there's another reason stated, you guys have to see if you want to adopt that. I've sent you, sent you what was in the application, so you guys could approve or not approve it, okay? But I don't know what, what, what this says. And then, uh, and, and then, and so, I, I think if you want to go over this, over what I wrote, and then see if, if this meets yours, then you need to spend the time now, if you're going to do it tonight, do it now, and, and do it, or do it on Monday. There is no reason you have to do anything tonight, no reason whatsoever. As it turned out, we were told, and the reason we had emergency meeting is because this needed to be done by April 1st, both the contract and this, and it has never, ever been, this has never, ever been done. This has never been done, it was not, I'm sorry, this was not the case at all, though we were told that was the case. And then, we were told, I was told, I had to do all this paperwork. So, yeah, I spent a lot of time on this, Suzanne. I'm not looking for an apology on the time, I'm looking for apology for why the, the commission, under your leadership, didn't do this months ago. That's the, that's the.
So, you know, I'm willing to take issues with them in your, and, and, your, that only the running, plus the, the, the fact is, I, uh, aside, the requirements of the water commission itself, this team has been working on this project since August 2009. It has conducted water quality tests, wastewater survey, and has brought us to this point. My understanding that the emergency meeting we had, where we could not conduct the meeting because we had two overriding questions with no subject matter experts to answer them. One had to do with the urgency of July 1st date. The second had to do with the $43,600 cost of the contract, and whether that had to be signed before and submitted along with the application. Now, we are prepared as a commission, and I'm not on the commission, I'm just saying this as a select board member, because I think this is why I was sitting here tonight. We need to now add some way to address the two questions made about the emergency meeting, which is why we agreed to have this meeting. And in addition to that, we have a model of the application that the select board can consider as the one we can submit to the state board. I suggest that let's not spend time talking about whether we should do this. Let's just do it. Let's just move forward and give ourselves the opportunity to meet the July 1st deadline and simply for the application for the company.
Suzanne, um, I think, I, I think, and I don't need your apology, but I spent well over an hour and a half with Bill on Saturday, um, going over the application, trying to prepare for this meeting, and I also spent well over an hour and a half, second you, going over this application and trying to listen to it. And, um, to be quite honest, for me, as a select board member, to get this thing at 5:00 o'clock, uh, is unacceptable, because I, I haven't had a chance to literally do it. And, um, I'm not saying that these people or the listeners are incorrect, but that's not the way we do things here with board. Usually, we get into that time, that's why we said that they help, so that the government of the board can, can study and ask questions. And I, I'm looking at this thing, and I'm going to just, do you actually follow all these people, I see GIA is on here, okay? Are you going to serve, uh, this GIA?
I certainly have an opinion, I'm not saying.
No, 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 no.
It's not, it's not an act of serving.
No, this.
Of listing the community organization.
It will, it will. It will.
That are interested in.
So, GIA is.
Mr. Chair, if you go through this piece mail, why don't we just make a decision as the select board? We have Lynette here, we have Aaron here, we have Mark Johnson here. Can we please, if this to a hope, and see if we should proceed to answer this, we've made your questions, maybe we could hear from other select board members. Should we use this time, the duck, to go over the two main questions about the importance of the July 1st deadline and the requirements we have, but we can go ahead and do that tonight? No, no, but do other select board members think about that?
Well, I have, I have no problem discussing it, but you're on age here, I, instead of doing it part of me.
We can definitely.
I, I think this is a tough question.
If we, if we, first of all, no one called Bill, nor you called me this weekend, did you call Matt this weekend, and, and knowledge about this topic?
Well, that is, with all due respect, that, that isn't the point. The point is, you have people on here that you never asked. Did you get asked on? Did GIA ask? No, you, and so, that's why I couldn't fill, I, this is why, pardon me, pardon me, that is why, when I looked at this, I could not fill it out. I have tried, in my three years here, to get people to do things in this town. You put people's name down here, then I know probably aren't going to react to this very well. No, because, so we're going to sign an application. No, no, you want us to sign an application where none of the, none of the facts are true because you don't really know. You didn't ask anybody.
Let me just back up a little bit. As I said earlier, this is the draft, this is the model, it is subject to change, it is subject to your.
After you sign it? After you sign it, it's subject to change?
I, yeah. I understand why you're modeling the draft, but once we approve this tonight, it's not a model of the draft, it's a.
We don't have to approve it tonight.
So then why do you have a special meeting? Why would you?
Because the, the due date that we're trying to achieve in order, big picture, to get the funding for this project is by July 1st, to our advantage, because it's rising, high probability, low risk opportunity for obtaining funding, not only for the engineering department, but this is submitted by July 1st. And we have Lynette here to talk about your question, if, and answer all of your questions, if we could get that.
I'm going to make a copy of their application.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to say, that seems to be, every time in the room, or on this meeting, allow this to just fashion, it's mainly community groups that might participate or might not participate. You and Bill might have come off of others that aren't showing up here that we would want to add, or somebody you know of that don't belong, that's going to take them off. We have people for to ask questions of, we have GIA here to see if, in fact, maybe do want to participate or maybe not. We have everybody in the room that seems ashamed of, to go home right now, and we have questions, all people for to answer our questions.
So, yeah, it says here, list the individual from the community where they're affiliated, who will actively work on this study. So if somebody is going to actively work on it, they have to be known, they have to be, they have to read, and they have to be able to participate. And same is in here, on A.
Well, then, then you have all this, this is, you and I are here.
Yeah, I, I don't know, we didn't know.
But, Mr. Chair, we can agree that we need to hear from other members, like, we don't understand your position, very, and we understand the high position. Let us, let us, you have, and John, and that, what they think we ought to do, whether we should continue tonight, or whether we should stop.
Uh, I think we should, after the, after the motion, that we continue on the meeting and go, and then we go to the end.
But I, I think this meeting was to gather the information, and keep, and ask the last meeting, uh, last week, and add the experts here, ask those few questions for more, to weed out all confusion, and to hear these votes, it's enough of it. So, I don't want to throw anybody in the bus, but it seems to me that this is what we, we owe, as we have, and I don't like it, from here, the staff, you know, the select board, that will put out any, regardless, that's our job. And then I see that we have the votes, um, here, um, asking questions, you can, you can, you can fill this out, the draft, the show here, let's look at it, and we're here to give some reason. And move, we, and move, we continue with the meeting tonight, and gather the facts, and consider.
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay, the motion made was to, motion, and the second was to Al, now we can have the session.
Can I have the motion restated, please?
And move that we continue forward with this session meeting, to gather the facts from these, get, uh, on the assemble of the, the experts, and the members of the public here, and we consider the draft of the application.
And, and not to complete the application? Your motion is not to complete the application?
Consider the application, the draft of the application.
I didn't, I didn't hear in your motion that you're going to work, you were going to go, look at the thing, but you, I didn't hear you were going to write the, the, the application.
May I restate?
It's up to you.
Motion that I'm making is, that we go forward with tonight's meeting for the purpose of gathering the facts, to the people at subject matter experts who are assembled here with us, and our members of the public who are also here.
Well, the.
And we, and we consider the draft application.
Are you saying we should, we should sign this tonight, is that what you're saying?
I am not. My motion says we should consider the draft application.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Do you have to say something, Al?
Uh, see, my name's on, on this, also potential participants. Probably sounds odd, but it'd be nice to know what participate means. Participate in discussion, which may or may not be supportive of the activity, or participate, meaning help move this project forward.
And what Al was referring to is the B on the list of individual from the community with their affiliations who will actively work on this study.
So I think that's very true question, if we consider it as part of the discussion. And, uh, and, by the way, why, the reason you're making your comment list as suggestion is because you are a member of the village parks committee, and the village parks committee and the water commission are, have named, uh, working lethargically, working, uh, working together on this project, you've already had one joint meeting. If you would like your name in, in all of that list, having the draft is considered, certainly your, okay, so.
Oh, it depends on what the definition of participant is, whether I want it, they may not there, but it'll be taken up.
And does it meet your need that we would consider that question as part of the deliberation tonight? Thank you.
Any questions, and have any comments? No.
I think we need to ask our guests tonight, Lynette Todd and Aaron Moore, because we're trading in waters that we're not familiar with. They're, they're the ones who will help us through this. So let's get the information from them, they'll answer the question, but participate? Sure. And let's, that's why we're here, get the answers, we gathered them, let's, let's get moving on. We're trading in water we're not familiar with, so, and it's safe to swim.
Ken?
I'm just curious, um, I know we're trying to do these, these studies, but where are we trying to feed these, why for this draft, we don't have a location yet? Does it be still?
Ken, this question, and is, they're going to answer tonight as part of, we convey that question to Aaron, describe where is a proposal for the engineering study, considering various alternatives for the location of ours.
Have the individuals been contacted as potential to?
No.
Or are it is.
That would be part, that would be a step in the process of the engineering services agreement, and we won't even start the engineering services, until we get.
So the question wasted, if.
So, if, if we're following, like, and you're our group on our town credit, or you have to be concerned about that. And so, questions we heard at the emergency meeting, one, do we have to execute the engineering services agreement, that is, have a signed contract and tying bond in order to proceed with the application? That was a question raised by the town administrator, and the answer is, we do not. The application, now get your second question to Smith, we do not have to have executed signed agreement, tying bond, in order to proceed with the application. Okay? And we do not, that means that we will not sign the agreement of tying bond, and begin working on the engineering study contract until we actually receive the funding from this. And I'm going to make one more. The way the proposal is written is in various phases. There's a 30% phase. In the 30%, it's the consideration of the location. If we are unable to find a location, to have the, locate the, uh, leach field for the wastewater system, if we are unable to confirm a location, we stop the project there, we pay tying bond for the time it has been getting to that point, and we have the engineering grant funds to pay tying bond, at no cost, and I know that's your concern, at no cost, to the.
What I just heard about is you're, they're allocating this $43,600 out of a big shot of grants, that, this may not even go forward, but they're not allowing $43,000 to another town that, that knows they've got a location. We don't even know that location yet.
Well, if we will not know if there's a location, or we can go forward, Ken, because that's, that's, that requires all kinds of due diligence about various proposed, some of them, plus we want to consider other sites that people may have in mind.
But, I, I think, that's not really indulging too much, by asking, though, how do we know if it's.
I think that Lynette, and I think your questions are very good, and if we get on with this meeting, and we have Lynette and, uh, and Aaron to address your question from, as a subject matter expert, I hope that will be helpful to you, Ken, would it? Thank you.
Uh, do we need a town vote in order to use the town park?
What, we're going to need a town vote, uh, regardless, John, at the end of the day, nothing goes without a town vote.
So that would mean you know the first steps to doing?
That, well, I think that's a very good suggestion, and the, um, the, the issue with considering taking that to a town vote sooner than the, uh, than the rest of the project, I think would be a matter of being able to present the town with the facts of the matter. You know, the town park has not even, is not even, it has one simple test, and that was the first test. But there are numbers of other due diligence, the questions that have been raised to us have to be researched, the springs that are underneath the park, the cisterns that exist in the building, the need to the property, all of these things have to be researched as part of the engineering services agreement, and that due diligence will be done. And if the town wants to vote up or down, whether we use the built park or take it out of consideration, that is the way this town is thought, at the end of the day, by town vote. So I would answer your question at this point, yes, but I think we have no information right now by the town about whether it can vote yes or no, and we would have that information if we allow ourselves to do the due touch.
Uh, I've passed as select board that, basically, you put the, because John stated it out of the box, that you put the park so far from a park that's in another state, that maybe we should take this whole project and bring it to the town first, to go away from all these hours and money and applications. We should, we should bring this to the town now as a project, not as an individual here, individual there, because I can know from, from my research, this will be shot down so fast, that this.
What do you, well, there is a motion on the table.
That, we have a motion we need to deal with, okay? All these questions about, um, whether we should go forward or not go forward, can be better, not better addressed at the July 6th meeting. can be better, not better addressed at the July 6th meeting, which, which we actually have on agenda, which is after the first of July.
That's right.
The, the reason for this special meeting is to, is to approve the application, be submitted before, on July, or before, or on or before July 6th.
No, the agenda here states, the agenda we adopted for this meeting here states, discuss and pass the contract act. We have to do the application, but not, not words, it says, consider the application.
The agenda says, discuss and act.
Set the line.
And approve the application before national citizens.
So it gave us a choice. The agenda gave us a choice. I, I, Sean, did that answer your question?
Not really. I, I, I agree with you, yes, maybe you've got the favor of the way ahead of the to ask the town people their opinion, you know, what it should be out there about before you spend money and time and all that.
Okay.
The motion on the floor is to, Bill, will you read the motion, please?
To continue with the special meeting to gather facts from experts here and members of the and, uh, uh, to, and, and we can then consider the draft of the application, period.
Okay, so I'd like to call the question. In all the favor of the motion, you haven't yet expected to the?
Yes, you did. Yeah. Sue Allen's second.
It was all ended.
No, I think, to my knowledge, I've just explained it for the town administrator.
I think you should ask Sue to redo her second.
Second.
So all the favor of the motion, let's, let's just, as a vote here, so we know, Sue Allen?
Yes.
No?
No.
No?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so three to one, we, we proceed.
Okay. So he's gonna be open now to that.
Go ahead, Cam. I would, I would, I would actually come up here.
Like a select board for, for all this meeting. About the potential meeting to gather information. As I said, we're trading in water that we're not familiar with. We're wanting to really help here to talk to the Lynnette Fodden, to get them on. She was going here, water, water investment commission. Uh, for Vermont Park of the Farm and Conservation. Actually, it's.
Yeah, that's just a minute. Can you not here?
Yeah, we're talking.
You've got to, you've got to click like this. You've got to put it right in the mouth. There you go. Yes, just like that.
Is, is it a problem for Matt not to be excuse a little bit with that? We thought the call was interesting to hear.
It's here.
Okay, okay, just checking. I can see your hands, see my wrists.
I think we should just allow Lynette Fodden to stay there tomorrow. Lynette, uh, with the funding, and then Erin, thank you both for, for attending us tonight. And Erin is, uh, the, uh, chief here on this project, she is planning this whole feasibility study. And, uh, that, I guess we'll let her run perhaps over. Let, thanks all of you for coming. Uh, we held a lot of meetings that no one has attended. We've had water commission meetings, we've had floodwater meetings, and it only took, let the bees on the basket to get you out of here. So thanks. Thanks for coming.
Go ahead. Go ahead, I guess. Is that who's going to speak now? Is that who's?
Hello?
Go ahead.
My name's Lynette Clodon. Um, I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have tonight on the application or the process. Um, so it'd be helpful to me to understand, um, what specific questions you might have tonight.
And I'll, I'll just quickly jump on after Lynette and introduce myself. I'm Erin Moore from Tie and Bond. I'm watching myself and Lynette and, uh, Mr. Wallace lean into our machines. So please understand, sometimes you're very, very clear, and other times I, we are hanging on every word in attempt to understand what's being said. So please, we're, we're trying so hard here remotely, but it is really very, very challenging sometimes. So, um, I hear my name sometimes. Um, we're, I, I know we all are gonna do our best to, um, answer the questions given, but, uh, have, if you could be patient with us as well as we're trying to clearly understand.
Lynette, I'll kick things off. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Uh, would you kindly share with all of us the importance of the July 1st due date for the submission of the application? And then would you help us understand what needs to be filed by July 1st? And then would you help us understand the timing of the funding that we can expect to actually receive in the town to pay bills? If you could start just by answering those three questions, I think that would be a big help.
Sure. Um, with the Engineering Planning Advance Program, last year is the first year that the program was able to use and appropriate, in fact, basically award all of the money that the program had to award, uh, which was really exciting for us. Um, so with the villages that I've been working with, I've been telling them all that the very first day that we can take action on, on the, the next round of applications is July 1st, um, because that is the start of the state fiscal year. And prior to that, we're not allowed to make decisions on money that hasn't been approved by the legislature. Um, so that's where the July 1st date comes from. There are a number of villages that are pursuing wastewater studies. Um, and the studies are becoming increasingly competitive. Engineering Planning Advance can only be used for planning. Uh, there's other funding opportunities that can be used towards design. Um, and then we have a goal of trying to get as many projects ready to use the ARPA stimulus money that the legislature has appropriated. So the program is getting increasingly competitive, which is exciting, but also a little scary because there's a lot of villages that have uncertainty like yours.
I'm pretty much on to this, Sue Allen. Can I ask you a question about that? Um, do you consider the applications and if you receive them, or do you, are they based more on quality of the application regardless of what order it came in?
No, the money is administered on a first come, first served basis. Uh, so we are, we currently have one application that is waiting. Um, and then we're hoping to get as many applications as possible and to use up all the money that is available. Um, once the application is made, um, I have to put in to the department to get a, um, a contract writer on board to write that contract with you. That is a three-month process to be able to get that person on board to write the contract. Um, I know that seems really slow and it is really slow, but with, um, the effects of COVID on the workload in the department, nearly all of the grants and contracts got slowed down. It needed to be written, and this is the best way that they have to move forward with them. So it, by applying as soon as possible, that money can be released as soon as possible, um, through that agreement process. Suzanne, did I answer all of your questions?
So would you, sorry. So Lynette, um, you certainly answered the question about July 1 and its importance as first come, first served and by competitive. Uh, the second question is, what information needs to be included in the filing? Now, it's not as though members of the commission don't know the answer to this question. But what we're trying to, what we're trying to do is hear it from you as the person at the state level who knows these things. So if you would kindly just explain what needs to be included in the filing of the application, uh, hopefully as close to July 1 as we can.
So the application itself is a relatively simple form, and it does ask for a couple attachments. Um, and, you know, and I saw the draft of, of what you'd sent. Um, you know, we like to see at least one coordinator listed and, um, that some thought has been given to the people who will be asked to encourage and participate in the study. But that doesn't weigh into whether or not, um, we will award the funding. It's really a question of, um, where you are in this process. Uh, we do ask that eventually the tie-in bond agreement is signed, uh, but it does not need to be submitted. Um, I, I already have the copy of, of the tie-in bond, um, draft agreement, but we don't have to have a signed agreement until everyone is ready to sign the department agreement, which will be ready for three to four months.
And Lynette, while you're on the topic, would you just go through the actual steps of receiving the application from the town and giving us a notice that you have received it? And then taking that process, would you just describe, so everyone here can hear you say, what those steps of the process are, please?
Yes. Um, so when you've completed and signed the application, you send it to me. I will send you an email acknowledging the application and saying that we're starting the process to get the funding awarded. Um, that process involves me putting in to have someone available to work on the contract, and it involves me doing some internal work to make sure that I have, um, completed all of the, the necessary background information for, for the application.
And then what happens in three to four months?
Pardon me?
What happens in three to four months?
So in three to four months, the, the application is, sorry, the, the agreement between the Department Environmental Conservation is drafted, and that draft agreement is sent to the town for review and comment. Um, so you guys have the opportunity to look at that agreement and to see if you disagree with anything that might be in the agreement. Um, and then, having received the draft, uh, we would ask that you set a date for signature for the, um, engineering services agreement, and then we try, we have that, that date put in as the start date for the contract uh, between the town and D E C. And so then, then both agreements basically get executed about the same time.
Sure, go ahead. First of all, can you tell us how much money the legislature has put into this program? What's the total amount we're working with?
So I don't know the exact figure that the legislature has done for this current, um, budget cycle. I haven't had an opportunity to catch up with my boss on that. Um, typically, the legislature appropriates $3 million for what's called a pollution control grant. And the existing authorizations and statute let this program take, uh, a certain portion of that funding. Um, last year, we took 10% of that funding, so it was about $300,000.
My next question is, with two of your sides, you said on board, was it you? Was it someone with the right?
What did you say?
Sorry, could you repeat the question again?
I was wondering how the decision is made by whom?
Oh, so I make the decision, um, when the application comes in, I review the materials. For most of the cases, I've been working with the villages right along. I think one of my first conversations with Bill Kearns was probably shortly after he started, if he's only been there three years. Um, because it does seem like it was about three years ago. Um, and, and, you know, in some cases, like in the case of Londonderry, I'd been talking with them for six years before they applied. Um, so, um, for, in most, so in most cases, I've been working with the villages. I know what's going on in the villages a, and why, why they're interested in the study. So then I go to my director and I make sure that we have the funding available to award. He puts them on a tracking list um, and make sure that that money is there and to be allocated and reserved for that, for that work. And then he also is the individual that puts the project on the list for the, a woman who will end up writing the draft agreement with the town.
I think I understand that you're dealing with these on a first come, first served basis. Isn't there some basis for me, I, a village of our size or larger with a specific problem? We have a potential problem, and we don't have an existing problem. So someone with an existing problem would probably take priority with it, huh? Regardless of what they, they put in the application.
So it doesn't really work that way, um, with, if we, there aren't villages out there who have such terrible problems that the department would, um, be pursuing this, this sort of like emergency action. Um, and if they're, the, the last couple of towns where they had, uh, a number of straight pipes that were discovered were, um, Shoreham and Cabot. And those, those villages, um, were put under order. Uh, but they initially started with a feasibility study. Uh, the straight pipes were found, and then the department put them under order, basically to make sure that they took action, uh, to fix the problems.
My last question is, is there any share on part of the community, I, a percentage of the total cost comes to us? A lot of grants, you have to match a certain percentage of the grant.
No, so there's no match requirement with this. Uh, this is a, um, this is a legacy funding mechanism that the Vermont Legislature, Legislature created in the 60s and 70s to support the federal Clean Water Act grants that came in and built most of the collection systems and wastewater treatment plants in Vermont. Um, so the idea at the time was that the, um, that the, the towns just didn't have any sort of ratepayers or base or, um, ability to repay any of, of the funds that were needed to develop the project enough to unlock some of those further funding doors to be able to get to the grant status from the federal government. Um, so the way that the, the funding is structured is that it's an advance. So it fundamentally is a loan to the town from, from the state, but it is a loan where the, that never collects any interest until the project goes to construction. And at that time, if the project is eligible for a pollution control grant, then the advance is converted to a grant. And that is something that we can determine in the study phase, um, is that eligibility. So before you knew, um, before you decided to go forward with the project or not, you would be able to make an informed decision about whether this would get converted to grant or not.
Thank you very much. You guys have any other questions? Alan?
Well, my.
Go ahead.
Nope, I did, I was looking to see if there was, uh, either closing discussion because certainly some of the comments made earlier, I, uh, just wanted to say I attempted to reflect very much so in the description. Um, but I think you know, the town has tight parcels and soil that's very movable, but risk avoidance and maintenance of a, uh, wonderful, thriving, um, little econo, economic center. Um, that's a very strong motivation here. So I know it sounds like. So I know it sounds like two of us were writing two different things at the same time, but based on that description, it sounds like the, the main motivation was very consistent between the two. I think that's very important to note, just because there's, which is a horrible situation. And unfortunately I've worked with communities that have this case. Just because wastewater isn't rolling down, you know, everyone's back lots, which is obviously very concerning. Doesn't mean the current systems meet standards and regulations that today. So, so we're able to look at the parcels, the locations of the drinking water sources, the types of soils, and we know that most, the vast majority of the systems are non-conforming to current environmental standards. Luckily, based on the soils, we know it doesn't go to the surface. That's, that's a horrifying situation. And again, I've worked with communities that are, that are facing that situation when there's obvious septic failing. That's, that's very distressing, but just because it goes away doesn't mean there's no chance of risk. And so the description of looking at the, the systems and how the, the village area is prioritized by the community and how to look at what is the feasibility of helping eliminate that risk of something happening that could impact that community and that historic village area. That, that's absolutely my understanding what the goal is as well. So it sounds like we're really consistent on that front.
Okay, Ellen, let me ask you a question. I, I wasn't, and you were not intending to stop the meeting, I'm just asking you more questions. So if you have any more comments, audio, please feel free. So this discussion is taking place, is grafted for probably 20 years or more, about some type of system. Several private ownerships have been contacted over the years. Would they entertain, would their land be available or second? And when they said no, that's often as far as the discussion would go. You mentioned that the grants are done on a first come, first served basis and there's a potential for more demand than funding to provide. When you look at your application, do you look to see if that community has endorsed the project with a vote? In, in this particular case, we're talking about a piece of village park as a potential site. Some people think that's a good idea, many do not think it's a good idea. So you run the risk of providing funds. And then a later time, the voters would say, yeah, we heard all the facts and figures, but now we don't want to do this. And you wasted life. So do you look to see an endorsement from the community as a further star or, or up, up the ante as far as not just, well, this one came in first. This one came in second. This one came in third, but the community's already said they would be in favor of it if, if we have a design system that meets.
So the answer is both yes and no. In terms of the engineering planning advance, the decision is made based on the application and meeting the, the requirements of the application. There's not additional priority and ranking involved. But the engineering planning advance is just the first opportunity for funding. The next opportunity for funding is the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which is paying for the design of most of the village systems. There, there's currently incentives to, to be moving forward with those designs with, with you know, what we call 100% subsidy. So that's also a loan program, but we give subsidy in the form of loan principal forgiveness. So when that is subsidy is 100%, that means that the loan principal is forgiven 100%. Now currently that cap is set at $125,000. And for the next fiscal year, it's also set for $125,000. In the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, that is also the fund that is used to fund wastewater treatment plants and all sorts of different clean water needs around the state. So in that case, with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, we are looking at all the different priorities and rankings and whether the project's been approved and additional points are given to those projects that have bond votes and, and other readiness criteria.
I, I'd just like to follow up on Lynette's statement because this is extremely common scenario. Sometimes you go to communities and it's, it's going to go behind town hall, 100%, that's the location. But it's a wetland. You need to see that with a formal analysis to understand. These are our options that the committee and the engineers and everyone else they've attempted to engage in the community. All the possibilities were brought forth, vetted in a logical, followable way. So then when you're questioned, well, why didn't you include this parcel? Why didn't you look at this parcel? We can say, oh, for instance, one parcel that was looked at very heavily in the 2001 report, it's very, very close to a surface-applied discharge. So it might not be a feasible location. But if to, to do that due diligence and be able to return to, back to your community members and say, no, we did look at that, we, we did, it's in the report, we did that analysis. And if, you know, I'm sure none of us want to think that there's no location, but absolutely. I've been involved with, there's, there's just no location that is affordable, let's say. There's certainly maybe a parcel that would be ideal, but, but not cost effective. There's, there's been other situations where they, the community thought they had the parcel and then someone came in and bought the parcel off someone else. And that, and that happens, but you can say we, this has been raised to us as an issue. We went down the proper procedure with a near, the Vermont D E C regulations. We followed the steps, we identified these locations, we looked at the cost. That's a huge question that often gets asked. That, that really weighs whether a community member is in support or not is, well, how much will it cost me? That's an important part of the analysis. And then it all concludes with a vote. So there's, the, the real goal is to present all the options. And the, and the motivation definitely at this point is just to get Grafton in line. And the, the forward up in line is possible. I understand there's, you know, without a doubt, we always have comments on our engineering proposal that we take those comments. Lynette has comments. Reflect them, edit, change how the fees are presented. That's very, very normal and I'm positive we can make sure in the many months we have to finalize an engineering agreement, we can do so successfully. But I don't think a dollar of that, you are not, I don't think wasting a dollar of Vermont D E C funding with being able to return to your community and answer these questions, like in a, in a transparent and documented way.
I also don't look at an unsuccessful study as necessarily being a waste. You know, Grafton's done several studies in the past. Those studies advanced certain things and Grafton is actually one of my favorite communities coming out of those studies because Grafton was the only community that didn't move forward with a project, but also didn't do nothing. And so like when I talk to other villages, Grafton is one of my star, star players in terms of the villages because you guys went forward with the pump out program and the pump out ordinance that you have. And that was just absolutely revolutionary. And you know, kudos to you guys for doing that because I, I really hope that other communities who are faced with a similar dilemma will be as brave as you guys were.
I think my question is for Lynette. If we are awarded the money, and it sounds like this should be, and we've done all the study, and we decided not to move forward, do we owe any of that money back to the state?
No. So you would only owe money back if you went forward with the project and built it. If you went somewhere else and got design funding and, and then somehow snuck by us and built your project, I don't see that ever happening. But then you would owe the money back. And there are only interest fees and penalties at that time if, if, if you, if you, if you don't qualify for the PC grant and you forget to pay the department back for the project that you built.
If the project is voted, and it's two million, a million and a half, whatever it costs, before you put 3,000 plus tickets, that's wrapped in. And it's sometimes a little less than that, but it's small amount compared to what we're doing this.
Right.
After 2001, when we had the first study and happened again in 2009, 2006, I don't remember exactly. Was I accurate? Eighty more dollars, so it's no, not more than that.
And I think my other question is for Erin. As you can tell, Grafton citizens are very involved in this process and decision. And I wonder if there's a public education component to your contract. How do you help us educate the public as we move forward on this project? The public will want to have a voice and speak out on the shore.
Well, the, the proposal as written, which of course we'll do some work on, it is written in the format that's consistent with Vermont D E C P E R, which means preliminary engineering report standards. So we didn't, we did not come up with that format. We, we tried to show how each step would accommodate those standards. And at each stays, stage, there is absolutely a very critical meeting and presentation of the findings and engagement because you, it, there's no amount of technical work on my end, which can't progress this project without community support. So not, it's definitely on me to clearly communicate, you know, where we are at the end of 30%, which is what are the sites we've looked at? What are some of the potentials? Describe the alternatives. The next stage, the, the 60% is then, you know, comparing, contrasting alternatives, very, very important for community feedback and essential, just can't, can't progress, it's an essential component of it and can't progress the project. And not meaning the project to a design phase, meaning can't complete the scope at hand without community feedback at each stage. And just, you know, the, I think Lynette could comment on the intention of the application. Certainly we had known that the parks, the park group already is very engaged with this. So I think the intention was simply to list the members of that committee, not specifically call anyone out as you must participate, but we're certainly hoping any large, flat piece of land kind of could look like a playing field. So I, I, I see that there is a, a natural, you know, hopefully something that comes together between those two groups because, you know, a leach field can look very much like a village square, depending on where the location is. So, so I'd hope there's some natural sort of chemistry and, and cohesiveness between those two groups. But definitely it was just intended to be a list of who's on that committee.
So Ellen, the 2001 study, which I was involved with, it was selected, went to the preliminary engineering service, just like with this now. But I led the board and the new board never took a step to the back. So there was never any meeting or whatever was decided and it was done, let's say, we had been set on. The 2009 or whatever the adequate one, I believe the board started that on water, which was a worse thing. But I believe the board also did not give it to the public. So regardless, if the board decided to go forward with the study, and this would be, if the board wants to continue, this would be the first time. This is your third study, but it actually did go to the town, will go to the county. I mean, I'm assuming this would be, you know, I can't, but this would be a situation. And the town might, might reject it, or won't accept it. Any other questions? If not, I'd be delighted to know, it was a lead. I'm not quite sure what was on the.
Mostly, so I just want to make sure that everyone's had a chance to, uh, mad at the board. I, I want to make sure as a select one member that everyone has had a chance to have Lynette answer their question about the importance of the July 1 date, that it is, words are made on a first come, first served basis. That all we have to turn in is a scrap of the tie-in bond. We're not making any kind of commitment to tie-in bond by a line of this grant. And that the money would be awarded to us in three to four months. The same time it keeps to do so, exiting the contract with tie-in bond. There will be no, no work done by tie-in bond, no invoices arriving to the town and tie-in bond until the grant money is in demand for us to pay those. I just, is that pretty much clear to everybody now that I can go on here?
Yeah. You submit this grant application and you're saying it's tracked to the tie-in bond has to accompany it?
Yes.
So is this not giving you as a board the opportunity to go through the contract or go through paperwork to see if there's anything you'd like to tweak in it? Because now you're eligible to tweak it, which you didn't realize you could.
Well, Erin, would you like to speak to that? I think you can, our best answer to Kim's question. Were you ever in here?
No.
Okay, Kim, we're in a special question.
Give me a moment to stay. The question Kim had was, we have the draft, we have a specific, okay? So when we submit this draft along with the application, that is what happens. And Kim is concerned that do we have the ability to renegotiate the contract or make changes even though it was filed as a draft? Is that right, Kim?
Yes.
So the scope, as it's written, is focused on the P E R components. And certainly I understand there's commitment as far as what will be accomplished, that multiple sites will be looked at, taken under consideration. There is no preliminary comments that I've seen yet that would change our scope whatsoever as far as our intention. If we want to memorial, memorialize that, that's, that's fine and that's common. At this stage, we thought we would be submitting a draft, getting feedback and back, and then modifying it. Usually a town attorney always has something also they, they want to see and change. So, you know, that was our anticipation of where we were. But the dollar value, I, I'm very confident. The only question that's been caught up was a question about amounding an analysis that had not been included. And then it was verified that that would be part of design, would be acceptable to be part of design. But that was the only item that was of concern from a, from a dollar value. So certainly I, I'm very confident we can do what needs to be done. I have no hesitation to memorialize some comments, confirm what we're looking at. And of course, the intention is not to submit any bills until we start work. I don't think the town wants us to start work until they have a commitment from Vermont D E C for funding. So I, so I think we're very copacetic on the schedule and when we would start work. And, and again, not until the town has that commitment to have funding.
One of the things that was in the contract, it was not clause that said, if, if. uh, if, if there was, the funding was denied, then we, and then the contract would be non void. Um, so that, that was my concern, that if, if the draft gets, get put in, but we don't get the funds for some reason, that's what happens with the contract. We got obligated, and that's not in the contract.
Yeah, I, I don't know, you guys must be dealing with lawyers a lot. Um, I get emails all the time, uh, especially, you know, unfortunately over 2020, it was very challenging for many communities, um, and who said, Erin, you guys stop, we're not doing any more work. And pretty much the email is all it took for me to stop doing any work, uh, because I work with small communities and I know budgets are a, a huge concern. So we've, we've never plowed ahead, um, after a community has asked us not to do any work, but, uh, I completely understand whatever your experience is. Um, if that clause would make the town comfortable, no problem, but additionally, there's really no motivation, uh, to sign our contract until you have commitment for the funding. So I, we are completely fine, time bond is not going to run away. I have a feeling I will be, um, hopefully engaged like this, and I mean engaged in a manner of reached out and communicated and get to speak to you all, um, and provide support in the months till we get to that point. Um, but, but certainly, uh, there's no concern on my end that, uh, we are, we are happy to wait whatever months necessary to start our work.
So, uh, could you just, Erin, be very clear and say, uh, and, and say, what is your position on receiving comments and further negotiation of the draft between now and closer to the time we receive the funding?
So already from the state, I've received feedback on a format they'd like to see, um, as far as billing, how we'd like to be billed, um, if there's any specific scope item we'd like to see included, um, specifically the format, anything, um, and I don't know, this is where we're getting to know each other, if you want to communicate that directly to me through Bill, if you want to communicate through Matt, and Matt email me, whatever the comfortable method of doing this, I am happy and open to do that. Um, but, but as, uh, select board, you get comments to me on what you would like to see addressed. We'll mark it up, um, as a draft, showing the comments we've addressed, get it back to you, and then finalize once we're all comfortable with what's in it.
So we are not blocking into a language within the draft that will be submitted with the application. There can be changes through that.
Well, I'll, I'll, I not backpedal a bit, but if something that's not consistent, I'm trying to think of something. You know, we just talked about amounding analysis, which is a technical item that, um, Lynette had said, should you consider this? And then we agreed, that's more appropriate if a site is chosen during design. That, that's a technical analysis requiring some modeling. That's, that's something that certainly would have, uh, time impact, but we're committing to look at multiple sites, do, um, risk analysis and feasibility analysis on multiple sites. I have time in there for, um, a site we have not visited yet to make sure we can do test pitting on. Um, you know, there's, it's a very prescribed components to the report, and I've made sure that we can deliver on them and then be very present with you, um, which I think is very important here. Uh, I want to make sure, you know, we're, we're physically there, um, you know, addressing these meetings at the deliverable point, so I can in person answer questions.
Lynette, where does it say we, we send you a copy of the contract? I use the contract to draw, to answer your questions as to the purpose and to the scope. That's, that's all you want. You don't want our copy of our contract, do you?
We actually always collect a copy of the contract of the engineer, uh, and mostly we do that because we need to make sure all of the activities are actually eligible to be funded.
Okay, so you do need a copy of it sent with the application?
So we already have a copy that, um, you guys had sent to us already, so we don't need it again. Um, and, and, you know, the, the actual details of that contract, um, you guys can work them out over the three month period that I'm waiting to, to, you know, get in line for the contract of the department. And so, um, so I already have all that, and, um, at this point, we just need the actual application and the, the materials that the application asks for.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Kim, does that answer your question? Just to make sure you're comfortable with all that. This is your area, town responsibility, I want to make sure you're comfortable with what Erin has described as what can happen between now and when the contract is executed, that is signed, uh, and that wouldn't happen for three to four months. Uh, are you comfortable with that?
I am, but I, is this anything, because it's a job, I know it's small to them, but quite a large test, is that anything in our attorney should take over that?
Sure, I think that Erin pointed that out.
That's all.
Um, the, the format that we asked for is a really different format, and so before you pay the attorney to look at this contract, you should wait for Erin to use the format that, um, we asked for, because it is a much longer document.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we've really seen that the, this application don't have a guts to resolve the law. And there's only some action here, we're not going to lose. What happened to the conference? It's not fair, but, uh, there's only next year, there's no emergency catalyst to follow the project, it's not random, it's completely guaranteed, it's diligent. I'm sorry, you can't random, three days, sugar, it's not possible, it's always, no.
So then, so you have, we have a motion to continue the motion, you should, I think we'll come to the one where we can add a little question.
What about, what part of the motion is in the application?
So do you want to make a motion to that?
No, I think that's part of the motion, to consider, to take a look at the application, consider the application.
No.
The draft, I'm just, to consider the draft of the application that was submitted to my.
Okay, but you've been doing it, so, but, but, okay, so that's all been done.
Point out a couple of things then specifically, because there are questions that came up in the beginning of the discussion. And does everybody in the public have a copy of the draft, of the application? One of, someone made copies. I just want to make sure that everyone is, as part of the mechanism.
There's no one been complaining about it, any meeting, member of the, went to validation?
Okay, and I know that this is mandatory, but it's a, not the application, it's been set, and model for the town. Drafted by Erin, for our ease to have something to look at and start with, and putting our application.
So, so can I, if, if, while I'm at that, it's like, we are looking at the application, and we will draw up the application on mixing the two assets, that would be things?
Only if you want to miss the July first, you say.
Well, what I'm confused is that this is a draft, we were, are you suggesting that we, what of this contract, that I'm how?
No, I am not suggesting that, Mr. Chair, I'm following through on the question that you asked about the motion, and what is the next step in the meeting? And the next step in the meeting was review, yeah, the draft.
Yeah, I'm not presenting that.
Well, we'll see, well, let's see, let's, we're going to see.
What is, what is there to, to, the application?
Okay, there were some questions that were asked, does anybody have a copy? Okay, Al, could you share the copy with Bob, please, so that you can see it?
Bob has, I, I know.
Okay, okay. I'm confused with the, the.
I have another copy, it's something we want to.
Okay, so, uh, and if you have, I'm going to have the air on the document here, and then it's rough. So page one, wait, uh, Don, do you need a copy? Kim is, Kim is making my copy. So make your, that's it. Okay, no, that's all right. Look, we're thrilled that all of you are visiting. Okay, that's all. So page one, it's pretty straightforward, it's just the account of Grafton and the place where, uh, the select board dates and signs the application. Can you hear me? Erin, is there any comment you want to make about page one?
The only comment I'd like to make about page one is that, again, the, the only thing that's pertinent to the engineering contract here is the value of forty-three six hundred, which we feel very confident, um, is we, we developed that fee piece by piece, looking at the requirements of item one through fifteen of the P E R. So, so while, um, the engineering agreement needs to be finalized, which can be done in the, um, the upcoming three months, that dollar value, we are very committed to, um, doing the work for that price and, uh, do not anticipate for any reason that there'd be anything requested by the, uh, town or select board that would increase that price. So we feel very good that that is an appropriate fee for this study.
So in other words, the fee cannot, once we apply forty-three six hundred, it can't, it can't go up. That's the, right, Lynette?
Should you guys run into some reason and need to file an amendment and we have money available, then, um, we would, um, consider the amendment.
Okay.
But that would be considering something unforeseen at this point.
And Lynette, I mean, I'm sorry, Erin, while we're on the topic of the forty-three six, would you please explain to people the phasing and how the funding kicks in at each thirty, sixty, ninety, top bit?
Well, in the draft proposal, we included a breakdown of the amount, um, the fee that we anticipate at each phase, um, you know, from project initiation through each phase. Um, certainly, you know, again, from a building build perspective, that can be, uh, done hourly, we can, but I think it's important to understand about the anticipated fee per each phase. Um, but there's, uh, as far as how that's billed and how that relates, I'm sure, um, you know, there's, there's good methodologies to do that, that everyone will be comfortable with.
All right, so now on page two. Uh, are there any comments you want to make about page two? Erin?
From my perspective, um, this is pretty standard town, um, information, of course, if anyone had, um, there's a bad address or phone number, this would be the time to speak up. Um, but also the wastewater committee, I'm sure Matt could comment on the coordinators and that they are the appropriate, um, quarter, coordinators from the wastewater committee.
My, my, my question is for the coordinators. Matt, you have the time to sit here?
Depends where we go tonight. It depends on where we go tonight.
No, and the application is lit, the question, you have the time?
Yes.
I know, I want to repeat, and I was, you know, we all work for living here, so I'm just, Matt, want to make sure that you are, you'll do it.
I will work with the engineers, I'm correct.
And, and Meg, are you committed also, in five months?
Work with the engineers, yeah, but to support the commission, yes.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, I do think that probably the select board would need to have a motion to name, uh, Bill as the authorized representative, that's just a holding place until we have a motion and have, and as the authorized.
I, I believe that we, we see this as silent and not, not talking, also, we need to do the issue.
Okay.
My name, my name is Miss Bell.
I know, yeah, sorry, I'm, okay, and then section three, um, section three, Erin, would you just, everybody, this is the section that's headed, section three A, purpose. We're not going to go begins line by line, but, um, Bill, this is pretty much Erin's version of the documents we wrote answering the question in section three. So Erin, would you just describe to us what you got in here?
You know, Suzanne, this is pretty quick. If I'm, am I legible? Do I sound good to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, section three, purpose. That's the reasons the community wishes to investigate wastewater problems, the feasibility of solutions to them, consider, uh, including surf, surfacing sewage, again, luckily not an issue, um, water pollution, contamination of drinking water supplies, and development constraints. So this is the response. Uh, we've got, Grafton is one of a hundred and seventy villages in Vermont without public water or wastewater systems, and one of more than two hundred without public wastewater service. In two thousand and nineteen, the commission began revisiting the potential for a community wastewater solution in the village to present relevant information on the critical issue to public health, environmental health, and economic health. Um, the most recent effort to determine the wastewater feasibility, as we know, two thousand and one, during which it was determined that Grafton was impacted by the following conditions, and this is what I was referring to earlier, small parcels with denser, dense development, so that do not allow for development which conforms to the current state wastewater and drinking water supply regulations, and that has not changed since two thousand and one, uh, has the potential to cause pollution of existing wells. A Grafton generally has shallow wells, which are more easily contaminated by pollut, groundwater pollutants, highly permeable soils, which allow groundwater to travel quickly through soil, uh, potentially reaching well or stream before reaching the appropriate level of remediation. And so this is what we are saying, if it doesn't go up to the surface, uh, just because you don't see it, doesn't mean it, it, it isn't causing a potential problem somewhere, and old and undersized septic systems that don't conform to current design standards and may not function adequately. Uh, so tho, those are issues that were identified in two thousand and one and continue to be concerns for, uh, for the village center. So in addition to those concerns, the town's committed to preserving the economic viability of their historic village center. Uh, community wastewater service would protect the thriving yet fragile economic center from drinking water and environmental contamination concerns. So I was, when I was listening, I was thinking that this reflects very much so, um, my understanding of the motivation here as well. And we just also want to acknowledge in this section of this application that the commission, uh, just like Lynette said, has worked hard to pursue additional data and organized a community drinking water sampling and survey event, uh, to determine if failing septic systems had impacted quality of drinking water in the village, um, and in late twenty twenty, completed a successful wastewater survey, with a ninety percent, um, of the high priority, high risk properties returned a completed survey, which is a pretty fantastic response rate. Uh, so one important finding of the survey, twenty-five percent of the septic systems were over forty years old, um, so that's beyond service life, and an additional twenty-eight percent were more than twenty years old. Um, and this work was also a very successful way to raise awareness in the town and engage that this is an issue, um, that really needs continued community engagement. So that's a summary, uh, with some commentary of that first, uh, comment. So the second part is the description of the project, and specifically asks, what does the community want to have studied? What questions does it want to have answered? What are possible solutions to be investigated? And particularly, what costs is addressed? And there is a little history here, but the dollar value of the two thousand and one study, um, and the a hundred and eleven homes that were included with that, produced a four million dollar, um, cost, and the, the said it's, it's, uh, too much, the town said it's too much and, and we're not going to pursue it. Um, so the project did not proceed. So the goal of this engineering, uh, preliminary engineering report, again, the, the structure is, so it's in compliance with Vermont D E C standards, which allows it to be funded should the project go ahead towards that design and construction phase, you've got a document. You've got a document that's now in the specified format that's required by funding agencies. So that's really important. Does it take a little more dollar value from a preliminary engineering perspective to hit these thirty and sixty and ninety percent and regulatory feedback? And yes, but now you've got a document that's in the format that's required by funding agencies, which is really important, and that's why it's structured like this. And look at a smaller scale solution, really focused at high priority lots in the village center. Identify, again, these risk factors, shallow wells, soil types, aged systems, and then investigate service area, so who would you serve? Potential treatment and disposal locations, the style of collection system, and the use of treatment technologies. Is that appropriate? If so, which technology would be used? What would be recommended? And an update of opinion of project cost, because that's really the most common question, you know, that I understand, that I, that I get, is how much is going to cost me? Because my feeling about supporting the project changes drastically depending on the cost and the cost impact. So the overall feasibility for a potential decentralized wastewater system. And in section three, the third, is the location map. This is the previous map, if that's been attached to everyone's printout and document, which is pretty much a topo map with a circle around the village center. So that's a talk-through of section three.
To be clear, the location is essentially developed in the town of Grafton, and it is not specified by a location for the beach field in section, right Erin? There is no specification of the location of the end of each field in section C. It is strictly a topographical map of the village. Is that right Erin?
With a big circle around it. I mean, I'd be happy to show, to show it if I could share my screen, but it's just a topo map with, this is our study area. Not, it's not asking about disposal or treatment locations, it's saying, what's our study area?
Okay, are there any questions for Erin about sections one to three, and then we'll get to section four. Okay, so now then. That's something for John, please. Oh, actually, it's now, it's a bit more like a community private. Now, what we did here, Erin, used the list of community groups and organizations that will, if they so view, participate in this study. And any group that does not wish to do this would be taken out of the application. But essentially, these are groups that in some way, shape, or form have already been part of the project and are mutually included in the distribution lists that are sent by the water commission and the town administrator to inform people. And they are the select board, the wastewater study commission, the village park committee, the Wynn Foundation, who represent the groups tonight, the Lizzie Breck and Vermont Organization, which is our chamber of commerce, the Grafton Improvement Association, which has gone and has been attending these meetings and has asked very good questions, the town of Grafton Planning Commission, which has included most of the email divisions regarding this project, and, and the town health officer, isn't offered. Our representative of any of these organizations, would you like for us to take your name off? This is the list.
I have to bring that to the press table if I can.
Okay. Okay, so we'll take off the Grafton Improvement Association.
I didn't, this study hasn't been.
Right, right. No, I understand, we can put your back on.
And you have a question? I'm sorry, but unless you approach everyone who seems to get a letter from them, you cannot put your name to a document without actually having to express a letter legally. You are legally putting people's names to a document without any evidence. I mean, well, you're a, you're a huge risk.
So let's give you this, this one.
Well, I think, I think that has a very good point, and that's what I was trying to address from the meeting. It's all about, it's a surprise that maybe these, these names here want to proceed, but I believe you need to have a firm commitment before I would be going to send this application into the, to the state for funding.
And?
I think commitment gets back to what is participating. I asked earlier, what does it mean to participate? If that means a positive rah rah, let's go do it, not everybody's going to want to participate. If participate means express concerns in issues that they feel need to be resolved or are issues so strong that they don't think it's the appropriate place. If that's participation, I think the list is going to be much longer.
Well, I, I think that if you take Alan's comment, if you take Ken's comment, if you're going to approach the organization for these people, then there should be a, a letter or directive of what you expect them to do, and then they can make their decision based on us, based on what you want them to spend, how you want them to participate.
But so Lynette, tonight, I think it's everyone's understanding that the engaging different community organizations is for positive feedback or, and that's not even the right term, that we all look at these projects with a different priority set and different view. So I don't, the interpretation of that is not, we're looking for support members, we're looking for important community organizations that are going to provide critical feedback. That's, no one needs yes men, that's probably a dated term, but you know, we need critical feedback and, and people willing to provide comments and thoughts on positive and negative things. So that, that's definitely the intent there. Is that your understanding as well, Lynette?
Yes, absolutely.
But, but I think you have to, whether the person is in favor or against the project, I think you have to give them the opportunity to say they would, they would like to be part of that. I don't, I don't disagree. You can't have all yes men, you've got to have people who are going to contribute, but you need to ask them, and I don't think they do that.
Mr. Chair, this is a draft. We can take the names of the communities in order to achieve larger goals, which is to submit this application if we agree to it by the July first through day. We can take off any names, this is the draft, this is not a required list. We can take off the name of any organizations that are not here. We are the Grafton Select Board. The Waste Water Study Commission is a commission of the S I four, so is the Village Park Committee and the Wynn Foundation, representing. Why, why would we hold up this entire application for that reason?
Well, I don't, I don't agree. I think, I think that these, the long sections listed here should be nonparticled, and this is, you're not signing, you're not presenting this as a draft, you actually don't sign this.
No, we can make the changes, that's why the draft, yeah. We can make changes.
Well, I'm a little confused, that's, what are we doing, are we going to sign this for tonight, or are we going to do it another day? I'm confused.
We could, we could make this really simple.
What?
One word will make this very simple. List the community groups and organizations that will be asked to participate.
Lynette, could we do that?
Absolutely.
Okay, does that meet everybody's need then?
That changes the whole thing, yes.
Okay, okay. Al, thank you. Would you say your suggestion then, please?
List the community groups and organizations that will be asked to participate in this.
And actually, I thought it'd be as well.
Yes.
Hey, would you have a question?
No, I just, that's what Lynette said. This page could be blanked, doesn't matter. That's what Lynette said at the beginning, so, it's, either way, yeah, same thing.
And then, so that was a great discussion, and thank you for that. And then, the first and second coordinator, I think we already got, agreed that this public outreach, man, that major area, on the, here in Chris's area, yes.
Okay, so, we've been here for almost two hours and fifty-five seconds, but hasn't what I've made a meeting?
So are there any other current events in this select board on the, on our questions that you came into this meeting with about where we are in the project and about that? John, how are you doing? And I'll, I'll bring your questions.
I'm not concerned.
Yes. Sue, you're good? So John, how are you doing?
I'm okay.
Okay, so.
But I'm not sure, I'm confused, and it's still going on the same. Do you want us, do you want to make a motion to sign this application submitted by July one tonight? Is that what you're asking?
I just want to get a sense of, do we need to sleep on this and do this tomorrow?
No, no, we're not going to have to go, we need to see what you have in the day, what's going to happen on July sixth, or next year.
So then, I, and you're, you're probably commenting further.
I'm not, yeah, please, please.
May I ask a question on Lynette? Lynette, if we were to file our application on July's deadline, do you expect that there will be too many ahead of us in the queue? Is your comment going to be awful of starting July one, or will we have a pretty good chance of still being near the top of the queue? If we pay the fee?
It's really not possible for me to know exactly how many villages will apply and when.
I know that for the payroll protection plan, it was on our first time for a certain basis, and the members of the foundation were ready to get sent, they didn't, they just. But it, I mean, do we feel that we're, I'm happy to make a motion that we.
Why don't you make a motion then?
Going to, I have to, to my, I feel as though we really needed gathering the information and also answering questions about the application.
Do I make that?
I would like to make a motion that we, as a select board, may sign this application tonight so that it can be submitted before July one.
As amended?
As amended, thank you, yes, as amended.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, so do you have a motion though?
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's, I don't like the motion, but I, because it's not worded correctly, that you make a motion, as it says in the, in the application, in accord with provisions of Title twenty-four V S A, Chapter one twenty, subject, you hereby makes an application to the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation, and that you will then sign that. But before we go forward with that, I want to know, so that I'm not blamed for sitting on the thing and not doing anything for two weeks, who is going to amend it and send it to us to sign? That's all I want to know.
Yeah, one question there, if this is approved tonight by the board, then Bill Connors is right on, and it's who is going to make the amendment? It has to be given to Bill to make the changes, and then will be left on the select board to be signed prior to July one. Who is going to make the amendments?
Erin, would you be willing to make the amendments to the organization if they're approved?
I know we've, I know we've all been here for a bit, but can we just talk, already, I think, section four A, we discussed that the following organizations will be asked to participate? How, how did we want to handle B?
Same anyway.
Same, same thing, is that correct?
Yes, asked to actively work.
It will be asked to actively work on this.
Okay, but where, A is the following organizations will be asked to participate, B is the following individuals will be asked to, to actively work on the project. Perfect, okay, great.
And I think, amendment, and since, I think this needs to be presented, who Bill is according to the process, from the water commission, so if you would submit those edits to those amended document to Matt, and then Matt gets it to the town administrator, and then the town administrator would put the unsigned document on the table in the S L four office, and we would sign it before July one.
One, one copy after that, is that when the document is amended, it'd be sent to, whether it's sent to Matt Chiano, or he needs to go to Bill Burns, so he can get it through the select board prior to signing, so we have enough to review it, and not review at the same time as signing.
Okay.
I heard someone say their name was Miss Bell.
Yeah, that's me, Erin, Bill Kearns, it's K E A R N S.
Oh my gosh, Bill, holy cow.
Erin, just hang on a second. Can, is, I'm assured, we only, we don't know, we don't know. Also, I'd like to look at your section, you change three A and B, and members of the community for now, for three years, you have to, describe the reasons that the community wishes to investigate the community as well. I think most of the people here are three years, nobody's asked, we are the community, nobody's asked if we, if we're a proportion of it, we need changes. I'm part of the community, they're all part of the community, but we some of them are us. I'm sorry, that's not, this is not. So what are you, what are you, what are you judging with change there? Section three, A and B, will you describe the reason that the community, we are the community? Nobody's asked me, has anybody asked you, Don?
No.
No, nobody's asked anyone. A vote would ask the community, exactly, a vote would ask the community. Erin?
Okay, so had.
How would you like to see that changed?
I think in this case, you were thinking that the reactions of the select board and the water commission who are representing, as your legislative body, who are representing, but I can, I understand your point that.
Yeah, I think you only have to change the community, the select board and the wastewater community, which is to investigate wastewater problems.
I, I think you said, you should say, for the benefit of the town of Grafton.
And the same thing for B. Was there a hand, Alan, did you have something?
Well, I'm almost tired of everybody. I think you should add historical society to this. There's a lot of history, you deal with art, and I think they ought to have a chance to participate.
What suggestion?
Yeah? Any other suggestions?
Yeah, I, I also would, on B, there, I think there's a thing with, probably, I remember there's some of the businesses like M P T and some of the other businesses, but they might not participate as well, because they could be affected by whatever is not.
I don't know if the leaders of the community do it.
Well, you know, that's fine, that's, and that too, fine. It's, it's no harm, because we're asking, and that's, and that's a gesture, we're asking them, so at least they, if they want to make that, if they don't, that's fine. they want to make that, if they don't, that's fine. But I think, I think the ability, uh, has many people, I, I think, Aaron suggested that, the more the better, and if you get more, we can't have, does everybody say yes because then that's not the point.
Okay, so, I, I, and I think there are two, we all captured, basically.
Okay, so, let me understand, let me understand before we go further, okay? You have a motion on the floor, you'll need some further amendments. So, my suggestion, I'm not sure if it's Aaron or if it's Lynette, somebody needs to make the, make the changes, edit the bill terms, and let, and that's the end, and let them look at it and make sure that the changes are being done according to the minutes of the P. And once it ends the term, then let it be sent to, whether Matt does it, or Bill does, or a vote of them, and send it to them, will correct the draft, and then that goes to the Select Board, and then we will sign that before July 1st, just like it's done with any warrants or any other form of the gap. But before we sign anything, let's make sure that we review the draft and make sure that they power fund what we've set here, and everything we do.
I think that sounds very...
I don't want any change to B, section 3B, I don't know how you would change it. You might say, if, if someone in the community knows, but the fact is, it's, it's in, what wants to, what we want to be investigating is everything that's in, in the proposed contract that Aaron wrote, so I don't know how you're going to change that.
Here, the 3, 3B, the Select Board and Water Wastewater Study Commission for the benefit of the Town of Grafton wishes to study several aspects of wastewater feasibility. That's the initial statement, and then goes into the different things to be studied. Similarly, 3A, um, the Select Board and Water Wastewater Study Commission for the benefit of the Town of Grafton wishes to investigate wastewater system feasibility, and then continues with the, um, sent, the, the text as is.
Mr. Chair, that should be the motion, I'm not going to write it down, she's already, she's already typed it, so I'm going to get it from her.
Bill, I already talked to you, the re看了一次, you sent it to you and Matt to make sure that it's accurate, and if it's not, you contact them to redo it, then send it to the board, and if the board feels that it's still not correct, then you send it back for further corrections in the board case.
Correct.
That's how I would see it, then.
Well, I'll, I'll work with Aaron tomorrow morning, first thing, we'll work.
Okay, but, but make sure that, that Bill gets a copy, just make sure that he...
Yep, yep. I'll talk to Bill.
I don't know if Phil's talking to me anymore, if I missed a A in his name. Did everyone see me turn redder?
Well, you see? You see what happens, Aaron?
I know.
I just want to make sure that, um, that I said in the motion by, uh, July 1st.
Yes, I can hear you. Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor, let's do a vote, vote, vote. Okay, all in favor, I'm, I'm signing the agreement tonight as to the motion with the changes that we discussed. So, Alan, you start with me?
Aye.
No? No. Joe says no. Joe says no.
Aye. Aye.
Motion's passed, so we will continue to, um, rewrite the agreement, then, uh, let's all of us, it will be notified by the town administrators, and they'll, they'll sign it, and then we'll go forward with, uh, the rest. Then we have on the July 6th, we have further discussion on the wastewater, and the concerns that we're giving this, okay? A motion to adjourn, please? All in favor, Scott?
I have to...
Oh, thank you.